Would you call the roll please?
Dave Burris?
Here.
Wes Grimes?
Running.
J.R. Hudson?
Here.
Deborah?
Here.
Bill Lukens?
Here.
Larry Pratt?
Here.
Craig Romy?
Here.
Kayvin Turner?
Here.
Thank you. Legislations please.
Ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. If you would be kind to our new vinted taker, give him a chance to keep up with us, that'd be appreciated. And again, reminder to get up close and personal with your microphones when it's time to speak, so that the public that's here can hear us, and in particular, the folks that will be watching the video online. As always, reminder about conflicts of interest, or if you have one of those, let the folks know before you vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. Need to add to our executive session that will also be meeting per codified law 1-25-2-3 legal. So our executive session will be for personnel and for legal tonight. Need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I make a motion we approve the amended agenda, including SDCL 1-25-2-3 legal.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the January 19th council meeting, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes during January 19th council meeting.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Did the folks in the audience hear Craig well enough, or do we need to have him be a little more clear?
Great.
Alright, thank you. Need a motion to approve the bills in between, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills in between. Hundred thirty-four thousand seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims of seventy-three thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents, and accounts payable for 2020 for four thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any communications from the public? Anybody that wants to address the council, come on up. Need your name and address, please, and don't forget to take your free plastic bag on behalf of the city with you when you go.
Okay, so I use this one then?
Yep, that's a claim.
That's a new one.
That's a claim.
My name's Case Cook, live at 1746 Summer Road. Thank you all for being here. Just a couple of things, I don't want to be an old penny on this thing, but I'm back to my marijuana deal. Did any of you happen to catch on Channel 1 yesterday, they call it a Cracker Barrel thing, but Senator Mike Durbin of Rapid City put it on. He's put together a coalition and a caucus type thing where he's having people come in and discuss this whole marijuana deal. It was kind of interesting, just, I'll recap it just real fast. He had a bunch of people that came in, one of the guys was a Kittrick Jeffries, who kind of portrays himself as a, he owns a business, does a lot of consulting work on marijuana from a financial standpoint. He worked with Colorado a whole lot on their program, and to get it running. So he's really heavily involved with it, he's working to be heavily involved with us in it. Not saying that's good or bad, but I'm just saying he's going to be a point person. But it was really pretty interesting. The biggest thing that they're pushing for is the economic plus to this. And one of the things that, as I've talked before, bothers me the most is one, yeah, there's a lot of money moves around, no question of that, but nobody ever seems to want to spend a lot of time talking about the social side of it. You know, the expense of long forces formulation entire new government agencies to monitor license, inspect, South Dakota agency have already asked for four million dollars to cover the costs of setting up for legalization of marijuana. They've set, asked for a hundred and thirty-five million just to cover medical costs. Now they say this is all going to be paid back from revenue from when they start collecting the money. Well, Colorado told us the same thing when I lived there. We never saw that happen. Never could you get anybody to say, yes, these coffers got filled. They always said that all the money that was being gathered from marijuana sales, the taxes of it, was going to go to help schools and help promote, this seems odd, saying no to drugs. But yet we're going to gain all the money from that. But yet Colorado, every legislative session comes out and wants more money for the schools. Seems odd. Nobody can ever talk, you talk to anybody in Colorado, no one can tell you where all that money went. It always goes someplace. The laws and stuff governing, the pot sales are complex and many. Just a lot of stuff, both for the hemp business, the CBD oils, as well as the marijuana stuff. Every state gets to make up, and this was hammered a lot in this meeting that I watched, every state gets to set up their own rules, regulations, and how they implement. There is no continuity across the United States for these. The only continuity that's there is federally illegal, which seems like a big contradiction too. Now, I'm going to just sidestep this a little bit, not to get into the politics of it, but probably we will see with the administrations coming in, they're going to get rid of that. They'll make it federally legal, which will solve a lot of issues, I guess. But the thing is that for employers and cities, there's no real clear path forward at this moment. We're going to get to stumble our way through it. So the question being is if you are a guy that, or a person that had a business, and this is legally your state, it is as it is in many of them, when a person comes to work, where is the level that they could be permitted to work? And how would you know it? Testing for THC is not a simple little blow in the bottle deal as like it is for alcohol. Alcohol is pretty simple to figure out if a guy's drunk at work, as a general rule. Some people aren't really good at that either, but I'm just saying, as a rule. You're not going to be able to tolerate anybody working for you that's intoxicated. Are you going to allow somebody that's going to work for you who got high last night? Alcohol would be gone, THC is not. Takes a long time. Who's going to, who's going to, how does that work out? None of the states have figured that out yet, you know? An interesting fact that I ran into while I was putting this whole thing together. Colorado has twenty-two hundred licensed marijuana facilities. Twenty-two hundred. They have twelve hundred and thirty-six licensed liquor licenses. Now think about that disparity. Who's pushing what? Okay? There was another senator that wasn't, that was speaking at this forum, and I did not get his name, I couldn't find him today, but anyway, he comes from a rural part of town.
I need to interrupt you, we have a scheduled 7:10 public hearing.
Alright, two paragraphs ago, I'll make it quick. Alright.
Very quick, please.
Alright. Basically, he said that he had a constituent that had a farm that wanted to start growing hemp, and could not get crop insurance. Reason why is banks won't do business with marijuana businesses. They won't do credit, they won't loan money, they won't do anything else. So anyway, to get on with it, there was another Cracker Barrel meeting in Spearfish with a Mary Fitzgerald. She's one of our legislators also, and she's pushing forth a bill to, in that, I guess the easiest way to put it is, see a car driving down the street, smokes all rolling out all the windows, they can stop and arrest them for smoking, you know, pot for their guy. So anyway, just some things to do it, but just things is, we don't have to totally give in on this.
Thank you. Alright, we have a 7:10 public hearing, petition to vacate an unused alley, legally described as east-west planet alley in block seventeen, Farmland Prentice Edition, Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, from Deborah Johnston, Frank Lynn Mason, Vern Egador, Rodney Randy Seiler, Shane Laurie Thielman, Lonnie Miller, the city of Hot Springs, and Fall River County. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this? Any comments from the council?
Lonnie Miller don't own a land anymore, does he, yet?
Nope. All landowners are accounted for.
Did Lonnie own property when you started this?
Yes.
Yes.
So will we have to clean that up?
There's nothing to clean up.
So if there's nothing to clean up, then is one of the other people that we write off now landowner of that property?
Uh, no.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Alright, this is a resolution that will be under new business for you folks to vote on when we get there. So let's close the hearing at 7:12 p.m., please, John. We have another public hearing at 7:20, is there anybody else from the public that wants to address the council? Alright, well, let's take care of some other housekeeping chores then until we get to 7:20. I have motion to approve personal actions A through D.
I'll make a motion to approve personal action I and S A through D.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, is this a typo on C? Says attractive one nine twenty-one?
I don't believe so.
Why would we just now be approving it?
He is part-time.
He's part-time? So he's already started working, apparently? Says he's maintenance and driving range operator, don't we have a golf cart maintenance guy, or two of them?
We don't have two, Joshua Preyheim does car repairs and other things, yes.
Okay, says he's driving range operator, how much driving range work is there at this time of the year, I guess is my question.
Um, none.
So he basically?
Sorry, go ahead.
He basically doing golf cart maintenance stuff at this point until the season ends?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That wasn't Jason's budget, hire another person?
Yes. Ron was working with us last turn also, please. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go ahead and move into our ordinances. First ordinance A, second reading of ordinance 1224.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1224 and ordinance revising Title III, Administration, Chapter 35, Economic Development, Business Improvement, Chapter 35.31, Purpose.
Second. And my understanding of this, John, help me out, this is a clarification of this particular section of that ordinance?
Correct, it's just a clarification.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, thank you. Yep, roll call.
Dave Burris?
You.
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
J.R. Hudson?
Yes.
Deborah Johnson?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romy?
Yes.
Kayvin Turner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance B, second reading of ordinance 1225.
I make a motion we approve the second reading of ordinance 1225, and ordinance revising Title III, Administration, Chapter 33, Police Department, Prisoners, Chapter 33.05, Working of Prisoners.
Second.
This ordinance is removing that particular section, or the, no, this ordinance is removing that particular, Chapter 33, we don't have prisoners that we're responsible for, so that's no longer necessary?
Well, years in the past, we used to bring prisoners down, will this exclude us from that now, or? We used to have kids come down, they would actually clean the river, they were, I don't remember where they come from, but they, they worked in the street department, and they actually, they cleaned the river and they did projects for us.
Those were work release, they're not more protected?
Yes, work release, so this wouldn't pertain to them? Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Roll call? Roll call. I'm sorry, yes.
Dave Burris?
Yes.
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
J.R. Hudson?
Yes.
Deborah Johnson?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romy?
Yes.
Kayvin Turner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Takes us to resolutions. Resolution A. Resolution 2021-4, a resolution vacating the unused alley legally described as east-west planet alley in block 17. This is the resolution for the public hearing we had previously.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-4, a resolution vacating the unused alley legally described as east-west planet alley in block 17, Farmland Prentice Edition, Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution B, Resolution 2021-5, a resolution amending the citywide fee resolution. I make a motion we approve 2021-5, a resolution amending the citywide fee resolution, updating charges for contracted residential solid waste collection and recite the fees.
Second.
So this is an update to the resolution you folks already passed. When we entered into the agreement with Senator Sanitation, you approved the increase in fees for solid waste collection, so, and recycling, so this is amending that to reflect the changes that you approved. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. About a minute away from our next public hearing. Alright, 7:20. We have a public hearing for alcoholic beverage license application from Good Carline Culture, LLC doing business as Morning Sunshine for retail on-off sale wine and cider license, RW to be used in 509 North Rivers Estates. Does anyone in the public would like to speak to that? Is there anyone to hear from Morning Sunshine, in case the council has questions? Ah, clear in the back. Council have any questions for them? Alright. Well, given that there's no questions, we'll close the public hearing at 7:21. Need a motion to approve that application?
I make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license application from Good Carline Culture, LLC doing business as Morning Sunshine for a retail on-off sale wine and cider license, RW to be used at 509 North Rivers Estates.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have another public hearing at 7:25, so we'll continue. New business item A. Possible motion discussion to approve the requested tax abatements as presented and submitted by the county of Fall River.
I make a motion we approve the requested tax abatements as presented by the, and submitted by the county of Fall River, Director of Equalization, Bankline Properties LLC, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Matthewson, Keith R. and J. K. Living Trust, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Davidson, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Redlock, six hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Baum, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. G2 Lawn Care Service LLC, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and forty-nine cents. Hartson LLC, two thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and seven cents. Allen, two, one thousand eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second. You folks have a printout from the Director of Equalization specifically addressing these? Table, is there anything that's, you need that or can add?
Nope, I'll be abstaining, though.
Alright. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We should be able to get through the next one before 7:25. New business item B, possible motion discussion to not renew the Angostura irrigation district water service contract.
I'll make a motion to not renew the Angostura irrigation district water service contract number 2021-WSC101 for the 2021 irrigation season.
Second.
In the past, I guess we were told if we didn't keep paying our dues, that we would not be able to basically catch up once we become in the old years, is that true or not?
As long as we own the property, we can pay the money for the year, and we can renew it the next year. Currently, we have not used that water in 24 years. We are number 101 on the list of people who get to use that water. It's only excess water beyond the storage capacity of the lake. There has been no spill over water in 24 years.
There was a, there was a guy that used to irrigate that property, I don't know where he was getting the water from, if he was using his or not. Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not cutting our nose off and spluttering the face.
That's correct, we're paying three hundred dollars a year right now for something we're not using.
I get that, but if you say so.
We did discuss this at Airport Advisory, just to figure out, are we, you know, are we picking the knife up to do damage to ourselves? And this would be irrigation water for airport property. We can't grow anything out there of any height, we have no plans to do any agriculture out there. So we have, we've had no use in the past, we have no planned use in the future, so.
You know what they say in the West? Whiskey's for drink, water's for fight.
Well, we think we'll keep all our facial appendages in, even if we give this up.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, back to our 7:25 public hearing. Public hearing on alcoholic beverage license application from Springs Hotel LLC, doing business as Springs Coffee Cup for retail on-off sale malt beverage, and South Dakota Farm Wine License to be used at 602 Sulphur Springs. Coffee kiosk, thank Dave. Anybody from the public would like to address this? Anybody from the Springs Coffee Kiosk available to answer questions from the council? Does the council have any questions for them?
Just licenses for that, that new coffee thing they just moved in there, or is it for the motel?
It's for the coffee kiosk. It's for the kiosk.
Can you come speak into the mic?
So. Our, our. So this is?
There's a baggie there that's put over it.
This is for packaged wine and beer to go.
To go. The idea is that eventually we're going to cover that pool, which has been kind of a hardship for the hotel and the city likewise. So we'll cover that and make that into kind of a eating place, like a beer garden, kind of fenced-in beer garden. So if someone wanted to go in there to eat in that beer garden, then they could open that beverage there, otherwise it would be covered up to go.
Are those meals for like, like you to eat in there?
Yes.
But they can't take an open container like in a car and go, I mean, everything you'll sell will be?
Is off sale.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything else from the public? Alright, we'll close the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Close the public hearing at 7:29, thank you, Ricky. Alright, I give a motion on the alcoholic beverage license application.
I'll make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license application from Springs Hotel LLC, doing business at Springs Coffee Kiosk for a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License to be used at 602 Sulphur Springs.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us back to new business item C, a possible motion of discussion to approve a memorandum of agreement. I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement. I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement with the VA for compensated work therapy transitional work service amended to increase the hourly compensatable rate from nine dollars and fifty cents an hour to ten dollars an hour. Second. So, this is the memorandum of agreement that the city's been in with a number of years for us to be able to assist veterans that are going through the compensated works therapy program to enhance their skills and prepare themselves for work after they've gone through the program. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to authorize the pro shop manager to purchase six two thousand seventeen Yamaha golf carts.
I'll make a motion to approve or authorize the pro shop manager to purchase six two thousand seventeen Yamaha drive two carbureted used carts with a delivered price of three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars each from Mask Golf Car Company.
Second.
This film is a low jack feature.
I do have a question. I thought years ago we went against in-house heavy gas operated cars. I know private owners do, there's a few that do have gas operated cars. It's been a long time now, you know?
When it comes to the rental carts, as long as I've been involved with golfing, of course, we've always had gas carts. So, I don't know that there was a decision in order to desire to go to electric carts. We certainly don't have the infrastructure to charge forty electric carts. And this is replacing the six that were stolen last year. The hope was is that we would be able to find two thousand eighteen carts. That's what our current fleet is, so that all the carts will be of the same age. Kathy has looked around, and because of the situation the world finds ourselves in, there just isn't any two thousand eighteen's available. These are the first carts that she's been able to find that are close in age to the fleet we currently have. Misty did include a memorandum talking about the need for this. If we wait till closer to the golf season actually starts, we may not have any carts available to us. The recommendation is to purchase the carts that are currently available for us.
I have a question. Where's the unbudgeted expense of ten thousand seven hundred dollars coming from?
At this point, it would need to come from... The name escapes me at this point, but undefined unassigned balance. The hope is...
Is that you?
The hope is that the golf course this year will be as successful as they were last year, and there will actually be some additional funds that could be taken out of their budget. But the reality is, we need the carts. It wasn't their fault when they, that the carts were stolen after their budget was approved by you folks. They did the best they could to budget what they knew they were going to need, and they didn't know that they were going to have to replace six golf carts. Initially, we'd come out of unassigned fund balances and move into the golf course with the hope that golf course will have good season, and we can pick up the funds from there.
Couldn't they do with one less cart? Wouldn't have to come up with that money?
Kathy has said that there have been numerous occasions where she was worried about not having enough carts. She was out of carts, and folks were coming for tee times, and she wasn't sure what carts she was going to get. She'd like to have more than six, but we're not in position to do that.
What have we done to keep this from happening again?
What we're looking at is actually putting together an alarm system that has a cable that actually winds through all of the carts. So, if that cable is cut or disconnected, it would automatically set off, set off an alarm that would go to the clubhouse manager, make them then take a look at the video, the cameras, security cameras out there, and see if it's legitimate that somebody's trying to take off of the carts, and then they would notify dispatch.
Get the alarm, five hundred thousand volt alarm where we could keep this from happening again.
Then we'd be on a lawsuit.
Oh, okay, yeah. That would look like a lawsuit.
Just ask him.
Ask him for free.
So, we're looking at additional lighting to discourage better cameras, so we can see what's going on, and putting a large system through the carts themselves. We've been working with Black Hills Technology to see how we make all that work. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item B, possible motion discussion to accept service proposal and approve agreement for services with TrueGreen.
I make a motion to accept service proposal and approve agreement for services in two thousand twenty-one with TrueGreen to include City Carts, seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents, Freedom Trail, twelve fifty, Hot Springs Public Library at two hundred and fifty, and Evergreen Cemetery, three thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to reappoint Caroline Schwarzenbach, Steve Weenie, and Pat Like, and Joe Mulard in Historic Preservation Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Caroline Schwarzenbach, Steve Weenie, and Pat Like, and Joe Mueller to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to acknowledge the notification of a raffle from Empower Coalition.
I make a motion to acknowledge the notification of raffle from Empower Coalition of the Southern Hills Inc.
Second. So, there's a letter from Empower Coalition in your packets, and any time that there's a raffle that is conducted within a municipality, the per codified law of the municipality has to be notified of that, so that's what they're doing here. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item H, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Golf Course Superintendent Jason Happy.
I make a motion to approve travel training request from Golf Course Superintendent Jason Happy to attend the trans turf grass seminar and trade show in Sioux Falls on March first twenty-one to March third of twenty-one. Sorry.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our final new business item I, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Police Chief Mike Close.
I'll make a motion to approve travel training request from Police Chief Mike Close to attend the sex offenders registry conference in Deadwood, South Dakota, April eighteenth through April twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. Second. Discussion?
Yeah. We send Mike those every year. How come we don't send to other officers? How come just the chief goes and we don't send like captain or something like that? Because they all have to have training eventually.
To my understanding, and I'm not going to explain this well, Craig, I apologize, it's the person responsible for maintaining the sex offender registry is usually a single individual within the department. It's not a shared responsibility, and that's why the chief goes each year.
Well, it says training, not just putting a thing to the up there. They must train on different aspects of this. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
We send Mike every year, and nobody else seems to go.
Yeah, the part of the reason it's done in conjunction with the Chief's Association that he's already up there attending.
So, he's going over two different things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I apologize for not being able to explain everything about that activity.
I'm just curious.
But yeah, it's too bad we have to have the training immediately.
That's right.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Airborne Star Committee reports, administrative finance, Caitlin?
Admin finance met today at one o'clock at the Mueller Civic Center. Present were Mayor Nelson, John, Misty, Bill, Deb, and myself. In Old Business, we had an update for the council laptops. Anyone noticed? Bill's being our guinea pig, so that there is a good example of what our future laptops are going to look like. So far, we had a good review from Bill. There's still some tweaks we made, a few more laptops we're waiting on and developing a use agreement before we disperse those to the full council, but we're getting closer to having those, so that'll be nice to have utilized. Also, in Old Business, we discussed the residential tax rebate ordinance. This has been reviewed and discussed multiple times within the last year. It's also been visited by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was a lot of thought and discussion that ultimately led to this recommendation. The rebate was brought about in two thousand eighteen, and for about two years, you know, there was no applications. When it was first discussed this last summer, if you guys recall me mentioning, we believed due to the South Dakota codified law changes that it was an obsolete ordinance, it was dead off the books, and we didn't even do anything with it. We later learned that that was not the case, so we've been looking at that, trying to figure out what to do with it. After getting the first couple of applications in, it became clear that there was several verbiage implementation issues with the rebate ordinance, and some much-needed clarifications and guidelines. Ultimately, the rebate ordinance, they had some very good intentions to promote growth in the city and restoration of some older homes. I think the ordinance has proved to not encourage growth as anticipated. People are building, will continue to build with or without the ordinance, the rebate. Offering the rebate is also tricky to budget, for as there's no way to anticipate what that rebate amount will be each year, so as far as the budget is concerned there. It's five years worth of growth and tax dollars that we don't want the city missing out on. It's the recommendation of Admin Finance to repeal this ordinance. You'll see this on the next council agenda. Anyone has any questions about that, myself, or I'm sure Misty would be happy to go over any of it with you. In New Business, we heard the finance officer report from Misty. We reviewed and had some discussion on the codes of conduct we talked about in the past. We've had discussions on vacation accruals. The council will see this in the future in the updated personnel policy to approve later. Currently, we cap vacation accrual at two hundred and forty hours. You can't accrue any hours over that, so it's our recommendation moving forward, releasing that policy to let employees accrue over two hundred and forty hours during the year and at the end of the year, anything over the two forty will be lost. We're also going to give notice and advertise to bidders that the city has an available city liquor license, a retail license available, so that will be something going out later. And then discussion was held on clothing allowance, awaiting some more input from department heads. And our next meeting is March one, March first at one P M. at the Mueller Civic Center.
Any questions for Caitlin? Thank you, Caitlin. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Airport Advisory met Thursday, January twenty-eighth at eight A M. at the airport. Members present were Larry Vetterman, Ed Jensen, Petra Wilson, John O'Connell, Don Connor, and Shane Miller. And employees present were Ivan Venter, John Gregory, Tracy Bastian, and Scott Stogie. Elected officials present were Mayor Nelson and myself. Advanced Aero Technologies Group has been contacted or has made contact with the airport manager. They are still very interested in leasing space in the city hangar and are working issues on their end. We hope to begin negotiations with them in the next month or two. K L J Engineering has completed the preliminary design of the tee hangars and held a meeting with the airport and city staff to discuss details such as lighting, door type, and exterior colors. They were provided a copy of the recently adopted private hangar construction guidelines. Funding options were discussed for the tee hangars. It's the opinion of the committee to go ahead and stockpile materials in two thousand twenty-one and begin construction in two thousand twenty-two. This will allow the city to draw the two thousand twenty-two A I P. funding of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of carrying that funding for a year if the construction were to be started in two thousand twenty-one. In January, there were forty-five flight operations, and we sold four hundred and forty-six gallons of aviation fuel. The airport land lease agreements were discussed, and a small subgroup was assembled to provide input to the city on standardized lease agreements. The Angostura water lease and contract were discussed, as we've already talked about. Scott asked if the Angostura Volunteer Fire Department could erect a building on airport property. That issue had been vetted in the past, and since that is not aeronautical, that use would not be aeronautical in nature, the land cannot be used for that purpose. Mayor Nelson once again asked if there was a representative from the Glider Community that could be part of the committee, as he is ready to officially appoint members of that committee per the recently adopted charter. Meeting adjourned at nine thirty A M., and the next meeting will be Thursday, February twenty-fifth, eight A M. at the airport.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
The meeting of the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District was called to order at seven P M. on Thursday, January fourteen, two thousand twenty-one at the Mueller Center by Chairman Michael Lindy. All members were present except for one. All motions approved unanimously, unless otherwise noted. No conflict of interest were noted. Motion by Messenio, second by Horton, to approve the January fourteen, two thousand twenty-one agenda. The November twelve, two thousand twenty meeting minutes, Horton approved with corrections. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen audit year corrected to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Spelling of last name, Dolan, to Dolan, no D. I C S account interest rate is point five percent rather than point zero five percent. Les Cop will replace Paul Knapp Holt as the representative from the Fall River County Commission. The landfill management contract extension approved after November twelve, two thousand twenty meeting was executed by Chairman Lindy and contract manager Kerry Parker with an effective date of January first, two thousand twenty-one. The treasurer's report was presented, including verification of new financial investments with First National and Liberty First approved during the last meeting. Motion by Messenio, second by Winkley, to approve the treasurer's report. Independent Auto Services has completed the twenty nineteen audit, S D legislative audit has accepted the report. A review of recommendations were discussed. The board suggested the landfill website be updated to include the agendas and minutes. Fees associated with providing credit card payment services was reviewed. The credit card machine was added to the S D P A A. policy for fifteen dollars annually, and the required quarterly security check is being reviewed for completion. Renewal of the S D P A A. policy was reviewed, including coverage rates for the Polaris side-by-side, no action to... Something I can't read my writing. The equipment was taken. Discussion on updating the current answer of no to whether the district was required to perform water quality testing was discussed. F M G reported it is required for landfill permitting requirements twice annually. Upon further outreach to S D P A A., the renewal policy will be updated accordingly. Motion by Ryan, second by Messenio, to permanently remove outside... Motion by Ryan, second by Messenio to permanently remove outside agents from the policy and work with the SDPAA staff directly. Per South Dakota law, per South Dakota codified law 5-18C-6, fuel quotes were solicited from Highway Nelson's Oil and Gas, McGas and Dakota Propane on December 11th, 2020. One quote was received for direct delivery from January 11th, 2021 to January 11th, 2022 for $1.95 per gallon for number two diésel and $2.35 per gallon for number one diésel. The price is subject to change with market fluctuation. Motion by Messenio, second by Kaiser to accept the fuel quote from Highway. Current interest rates were reviewed for investment options for the Financial Assurance Fund CD-5266 at Dakota Bank scheduled to mature on January 20th, 2021. Motion by Ryan, second by Kaiser to withdraw the CD and reinvest in a Financial Assurance Fund three-year CD with Liberty National at 0.9%. Resolution 2021-001 was reviewed with and accompanying proposed conflict of interest policy. Motion by Ryan, second by Horton to approve Resolution 2021-001 and to adopt a conflict of interest policy. Signatures from all parties will be obtained and retained on file. Next meeting will be March 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Larry?
Want to repeat all that?
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Historic preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation Ad-Hoc Committee met January 14th at 2:00 at noon at the Mueller Center. The committee discussed amendments to the Hot Springs Historic Ordinance. Mr. Royals and Mr. Powers will work together to try to finalize the ordinance, taking into consideration the new National Register of Historic Places, designation for the Hot Springs Historic District and the demolition by neglect section of the ordinance. The committee reviewed the entire ordinance and once the amendments have been made, it will be presented to the commission at a regularly scheduled meeting for approval. The next scheduled updates for the Hot Springs website are in June 21st. So we will attempt to have all changes prepared well in advance of that to allow the city council an opportunity to vote on them. The committee discussed enforcement mechanisms and coordination with the code officer and identified the most endangered properties as follows. The Bodega Building, the Petty Building, the Fowler Building, the Baron Hotel and the Red Rock Resort. Based upon the city's representation that it intended to begin to actively enforce the historic ordinance as to these endangered properties, Mr. Powers will prepare a proposed letter to the city encouraging enforcement, enforcing existing ordinances pertaining to historic preservation, intentional neglect, vacancy and other pertinent ordinances. Steve Wiegans, Scott Sogi, Carol Lance, Swartinbach and Mike Summer agreed to research and become familiar with become familiar with information which could be of assistance to the commission and building owners to preserving and protecting their historic properties, including the Secretary of Interior's guidelines for rehabilitation of historic buildings. Mr. Gerald Colgan attended the meeting and brought the original book from which the Hot Springs Historic Guidelines were published. He will look into whether that section of the book can be duplicated by the city to give out to building owners. These individuals will also research potential grants and funding as a resource for building owners. It is the intention of the commission to offer informed assistance and advice to building owners and to develop clear guidelines to give to building owners regarding historic preservation and the financial considerations and constraints. It is the intention of the commission that these would take the form of a welcome wagon type of a basket to be provided to each new building owner in the historic district. The committee also discussed urging the city to develop an economic development plan for Hot Springs in light of its commitment to historic preservation, the new riverfront features and incorporating ideas for utilizing the vacant lots on River Street. The commission believes that the city is well poised for further development and wants to encourage the city to take advantage of all opportunities to preserve and promote the historic district. The meeting was adjourned at 2:00 PM. There'll be another ad hoc meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, February 2nd from 2:00 to 4:00 here at the Mueller Center. And then the next full meeting is this Wednesday, February 3rd at 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
I thought the Bodega Bar had a stamp from an engineer saying insecure.
It's still endangered without a roof on it, all the moisture coming into it.
But it's stable by an engineer.
I haven't seen that documentation, have you?
I guess not, but that was our understanding.
Well, we need to have something concrete.
It only lives in Eastern Europe, United States, I guess, calling.
So we're working on what we can do.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deborah.
Several ones today that are ad hoc meeting.
The next one or this one? This one was January 14th at noon.
Evans Pledge Advisory, Larry?
The next meeting of the Evans Pledge Bar meeting will be this Thursday, 11:00, 12:00 noon after pledge.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Parks Recreation, Ruth Fication, Wes?
Parks meeting will be this Wednesday at 3:00 here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Mining and zoning, Caitlin?
Playing in zoning, we met January 20th at the Mueller Center at 6:00 PM. In new business, we discussed the residential tax rebate ordinance. Since then, we recommended to repeal it, so I will not bother talking about what we discussed. We discussed contractor licensing in the city, the current dollar value limitations of the licensing. We recommended changing the Class A from $500,000 to $1 million. The Class A to work in excess of $500,000, change to $1 million as well. And Class B to change from $35,000 to $50,000 and to leave Class C as is. We had discussion on accessory buildings, subordinate requirement discussions and lot density. We'll be revisiting that topic at the next meeting as well. We also discussed the neighborhood density and ADUs, the additional dwelling units. There's been some requests to have lots that have two homes on it. And as far as utility sharing, there was a discussion only on that, the pros and cons. And then in old business, we heard an update on the Fall River Ranch Resort, the campground going in via USA Stay. They have their rough grading plead, water line installation in the progress. So we're excited to see progress on that happening. And then our next meeting is Wednesday, February 17th at 6:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Caitlin? Thank you, Caitlin. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Public safety met on Thursday, January 21st, 1:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. In attendance were Mayor Nelson, myself, JR, Larry Pratt, John Gregory, Chief Close, Safety Coordinator, coordinator Lori Sherard, and for a portion of the meeting, South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks Supervisor Trenton Haley, participated by phone. Chief Close provided an update of departmental activities. Extra patrols were in place at the school on inauguration day. Chief Close also presented a, made a presentation on vaping at the school. We discussed the recent replacement of three body cameras for first line officers. The old cameras were replaced because of poor battery life. The new cameras will automatically synchronize with the vehicle dash cameras. We discussed the feasibility of using the old cameras for reserve officers. This may be possible in some situations, however, the reliability issues associated with poor battery life is still a concern. The mayor asked Chief Close to determine what it would cost to equip the reserve officers with proper body cameras. The surplus weapon has been delivered to Southern Tactical, Southern Hills Tactical in Custer. A batch of the ATF required paperwork has also been delivered to Southern Hills Tactical and they'll notify us once the weapon has been placed online for the auction. The 2019 Charger is back from the dealer shop in Rapid. No resolution was identified for the problems with the vehicle occasionally not starting. While the vehicle was in the shop up there, it refused to throw a code. So they weren't able to identify any problems. In December, the department responded to 387 calls. Under old business, we're continuing to wait for guidance from the state regarding, state legislature regarding initiated Measure 26 and Amendment A. A subgroup will be working to identify potential costs to the city associated with compliance in order to help determine what appropriate license fees might be. We also discussed snow removal and salting of sidewalks and crosswalks at Evans Punge Mineral Springs. City administrator took an action to discuss this at the department head meeting the following day. We received an opinion back from South Dakota Public Insurance regarding the west wall of the flood channel across from America's Best Value Inn. As this will likely take a project to address, the issue has been passed on to the Public Works Committee. The committee continues to review information and discuss concerns associated with the activities in and around Skyline Hotel. And the committee discussed combining the traffic signs study with the study of snow removal issues. That effort will proceed with representatives from the street and police departments. We discussed the city of Hot Springs policy to conduct post-accident urinary analysis for all accidents that stayed in the I'm calling it the human resources policy, but it's, that's not the right name.
Personnel.
Personnel policy, thank you, Deb. There was a concern that that wasn't happening in all occasions. So we've asked that that policy be restated and followed as written. A request has been made to look into adding handicap parking spaces on the east side of River Street near the Upper Crust Cafe. The DOT plans will be reviewed as they've been, these have been included in the Highway 385 reconstruction plan. City staff will be compiling a list of obstructed intersections and notifying property owners of the necessary actions to make the lime site clear, the lime site clear and safe per our ordinance. A member of the public had contacted City Hall concerning, concerning the growing turkey population in the Minnacotta area. Trenton Haley with the South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks participated in this part of the discussion. He informed us that their office had already been contacted by the state home with similar concerns. South Dakota Game and Fish and Parks has been, may attempt to trap and relocate some of the turkeys. He stated that without significant snow cover, trapping attempts are often very unsuccessful. But because of the reduced turkey population in the Northern Hills, he did say that any attempt to reduce the population in one area of the state would be through trapping so that the birds could be relocated. In other discussion items, a committee member was contacted by a member of the public regarding snow removal. The resident was appreciative of the city's snow removal efforts, but was frustrated that he often had to clean the entrance to his driveway after the snow plows came through. Lori took an action to remind all the plow drivers to try to raise the blades if they see a driveway has already been cleared. As individuals, if we can wait to clear our own driveways until the plows have made all their passes on our streets, we can avoid the extra work. As with many things, we all have a role in order to get the best possible outcome. Our meeting ended at 2:35 PM and our next meeting will be February 17th, 1:00 PM at the Mueller Center. JR, did I miss anything?
Spot on, sir.
Any questions for Bill or JR? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Dave and Craig?
Craig, you're gonna have to help me with this because I think I threw away my original notes.
You can all be mine.
John, you can jump in at any time also. Public Works met at 1:00 on the 26th of January here at the Mueller Center. Present with Bob Nelson, Craig Romi, John Gregory, Tracy Bastian, Billy Morrow, Scott Sogi, myself, Sean. I think that was it.
Cole?
Cole. His name's not on the list, so there you go. Means I don't have my original notes, we're just gonna touch on a couple of things that we did, talked about. Mobile food vending rules and layout amenities forms, which we do have, all of you have, I'm assuming, the draft sitting under section there. The railing on top of the flood wall on America's Best Value Inn, that was discussed, needs to be repaired or added on to. Brush pile. We're looking at burning the brush hopefully this coming Wednesday if everything stays as scheduled. Dollar General coming into town on a secondary area just down by the Dollar North. A theme going on. Moving on to streets and maintenance, we discussed CWT worker moving from part-time to full-time. Alley maintenance, blind spots with shrubbery, tree limbs. This is looking to be scheduled. At this point in time, they're making marks, you know, on their map for where we need to hit for obstructions, especially coming out of the alleys. ADA's snow clearing for the mobilized pedestrians, the access to right now at the Hot Springs Police Department and Carquest, there was a few others. So that's being done by hand in those areas. Utilities. Evans Pump Station, the pump replacement status should have been on Thursday at 11:00 AM. Should be, should be done.
Is complete.
Okay. We talked about wastewater metering, getting some new meters moving forward. But without my original notes, I don't know if I had anything down on that. Replacement employee at the wastewater, water and wastewater department. So that was selected. PRV for repair and replace at the golf course. We were just waiting for the delivery as of last week. Did that come in, Joe?
I did.
Code enforcement department. We discussed a lot of vehicles being left on the street. Some we actually think they've been there for up to as long as five years. Underneath those vehicles with the freezing and everything else, possible motor oil leaking and all that going into the street. Once those cars will be removed or ever moved, they will be leaving a bad spot in the street. So we're gonna start making a move, pushing these cars, not literally pushing them out, but pushing them out of the areas that are becoming are becoming problems. So if you have a car, know somebody has a car, you might let them know that we are gonna start enforcing that. New violations on the snow plowing, obstructions, automobiles, and recreational vehicles, that falls in line with what we were just talking about a minute ago. That's about what I can remember very clearly. Anybody who needs to add to that?
Our water wastewater employee, we voted on him tonight.
Yeah, that was on there. Yeah, that's about as good as I can do with my memory. John, you got anything to add?
We got two RFPs coming up for our next council meeting, due date of responses for those is February tenth. That includes the street lighting maintenance three-year contract and the West Oak Building demolition salvage of sandstone.
Our next meeting will be next Tuesday at one o'clock here at the Mueller.
Any questions for David Craig? Thank you. Southern Hills Economic Development, JR?
No reports, sir.
Thank you. And the Golf Course Committee, no report on that till the season starts up again. Finance Officer is not able to be with us tonight. She does provide her summary every council meeting. If you have any questions, note those, and she will be available tomorrow. Go ahead and pose those questions to her. John, City Administrator, report?
Good evening, everyone. It's been busy. We had some more meetings with the DOT and some email discussions back and forth, continuing the parking post-construction. Asked them to add a handicap spot near the restaurant, any question?
John? A little closer, please.
Eddie Brad and Rick Saidie looking into that. He also asked if we made any progress on the snowplow issue in the on-street parking along Battle Mountain Road, and I said we will continue to talk about that and try to get some letters out. In addition to the West Oak Building disposition, they're now curious about the Bodega Building. We have a meeting with the engineer and owner scheduled for later this week. Land's engineer. And unfortunately, we cannot get exit signage at Exit Sixty-One on I-Nine in Rapid City. We do not get the traffic, my question worked. That was a very big disappointment this time. We had an ISG meeting to discuss wayfinding signage, just an initial meeting to get the stakeholders involved, kind of look at some sign designs and where these need to go, particularly in the highway reconstruction zone. Had a couple of airport meetings to discuss the hangar design, progress and construction cost estimates with KLJ. Continued evaluation of land use northeast and southeast corners of the airport property, Zone B, it does not look like we're gonna have any mining activities. Had a lot of activity with the Dollar General that's going in at the northern end of town. There were entrance railway requirements, DOT's expectations for that transition to the highway, and it's also going through some initial planning and zoning review. We're waiting to get some feedback from the DOT before continuing that discussion. Our Streets Utilities Parks and Cemetery Department continue repairs on the baseball bleachers. They had snowplow at the two events. They installed a replacement pump at the Evans Pump Station. They did some repairs and documented items for repair at the wastewater treatment plant. They've prepared the brush pile for the burn event scheduled for Wednesday, February third, where our permanent for South Dakota Wildland Fire. They handed me today the identified dangerous intersections requiring tree or brush removal from residents. We will issue a two-week notice to the residents before we start cutting these things out of way. Utilities is hiring Jason Correll, we welcome him back. He had spent some time with the Streets and Maintenance Department as a CWT, very good worker, we're excited to have him back. We've established the preliminary rules, forms, and layout of the city mobile bender use area. I've provided that to your council members for informational consideration only at this meeting. Other discussions with Black Hills Energy regarding Evans Point's electricity utilization and geothermal considerations. We'll look at that a little more closely, we may be able to get a better rate for all the pumping equipment that's involved at Evans Point. Also, their water robust classes have resumed, they're still seeking lifeguard candidates if interested, and their scheduled maintenance shutdown is March first through the fourteenth. We began preparations for the South, we began preparation of the South Dakota Department of Health grant for recreational trail use designed by students of SD State University. It's a hundred percent grant, the application due deadline is February fifth. We're hopeful about that, to get some design work done for free. Thank you.
Any questions for John?
Can we get a copy of that intersection thing about the quirks Tuesday?
I need you a copy of it.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, John. Just one brief thing for you. Got a card and a letter from Boys and Girls Clubs of the Black Hills. Thanks to you, club members are able to continue attending their Boys and Girls Club. They are receiving a nutritious snack, homework assistance, tutoring, life skills, adult guidance, and mental health support. Thank you for your generous donation of ten thousand dollars, being a part of helping our community's youth in these trying times. Your commitment to help the children we serve is appreciated by us, and most importantly, by those who need us most. Thanks to donors such as yourself, members continue to have a safe, fun place to be kids and that much-needed normal structure they are desperately craving. Please accept our heartfelt thanks for being a most committed and caring investor in our youth. Great futures start here. Sincerely, Lisa Sagdalen, Chief Executive Officer. And the card says, you've made such a difference, and it is so deeply appreciated. Thank you for your continued support, especially during this difficult time. So thank you, council, for working that into the two thousand twenty-one donations, it's appreciated. With that, need a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two dash one personnel and one dash twenty-five dash two dash three legal.
I made a motion we go into executive session under South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five dash two dash one personnel, South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two dash three legal.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there will be no action taken after executive session. John and Garland, if you would join us for the legal part of the executive session, please.
We don't see too many thank you cards from people we donate to, that was pretty nice.